Five thirty, and I'll ask Councilmember Bellinger to open with prayer.
So this prayer is from John Henry Newman, who wrote in the eighteen hundreds. You might recognize it from a song, "Lead Kindly Light." Lead kindly light amid the encircling gloom, lead us on. The night is dark and we are far from home, please, Lord, lead us on. Please keep our feet, I do not ask to see the distant scene, one step is enough for me. I never used to pray like this, that you would lead me on. I love to choose and see my path, but now, please lead me on. Dear Lord, please help us to do your will for the good of the entire city. Guide us, protect us, each and every one of us. Help us to follow your light tonight and always. We ask all of these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
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 I'll call this meeting to order, and if you'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with recognitions. Recognition of Holden Kelly and Eagle Scout candidates from Troop One Sixty-One for their Eagle Scout projects. Mr. Bray.
Evening, Mayor and Council, Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. And I promise I will be very brief, because I know you want to hear from the young men back there in the back of the room and not me. But just to give you a little bit of kind of understanding of why we're here this evening, and why Mr. Kelly's name is on there, along with other members of Troop One Oh Six. So Mr. Kelly started a project that kind of grew, has incorporated not only the Keep Nakodcha Beautiful Board and staff, but also two different divisions within the city, the library department, excuse me, three recreation and parks. So Mr. Kelly has completed his part of the project, and I'll let him tell you what it is, because it's pretty neat. So he needs closure for his part, and then your city staff and Keep Nakodcha Beautiful Board are going to continue that project, and we will have a grand opening November the fourth in conjunction with Texas Arbor Day. So Mayor and Council, if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask Mr. Kelly and his troop members to come up and make a presentation.
Please, that'd be great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Council Representatives. My name is Holden Kelly, and I'm an Eagle Scout with Troop One Sixty-One, and I'm here today with my fellow Eagle Scouts, Will Smith, David Terravella, Parker Bobo, and Daniel Hook. My Eagle Scout project is called Friends of the Forest Trail, which is an interactive educational installation that will be going into two city parks, Pioneer Park and Pecan Park. A little free library at each park location will kick off the trail, followed by ten houses attached to trees with different forest friends inside each house. The Nakadochas Public Library is working on all of the artwork and stories for each forest animal, and there will be a QR code that links to a website, so children can go and read and learn about each animal and a related conservation issue. And every Eagle Scout project requires that fellow Eagle Scouts work together with each other on their respective projects, as it is a team effort. Therefore, I would like to recognize my fellow scouts for helping me on my project, just as I assisted them on theirs. So Will Smith's project was revamping a preschool playground and building an arbor at First United Methodist Church. David Terravella, his project was building a large red Adirondack chair at Splasha Dochas Park. Parker Bobo's project was cleaning, restoring, and cataloging historical gravestone markers and headstones in the Old North Church Cemetery. And Daniel Hook's project was building icon stands for an East Texas area church. Thank you for your time in recognizing my fellow Eagle Scouts and I, and our work in the community.
Thank you, we certainly appreciate your work, that's great. Council, any comments?
I just want to say that I was at one time in my life a Boy Scout, and I never could attain the Eagle Scout standing, and I'm very impressed with each of you. That's a really big deal, and we should certainly honor you for it.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Congratulations, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
So my youngest is an Eagle Scout, and I know how hard every one of you worked. I'm so impressed, and thank you for doing it for our beautiful city. That's really incredible.
And I at one time was a Boy Scout, but I never made it to an Eagle. But I will say that I have church members that they are Eagle Scouts, and they are great, great students of the Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to get a picture with the scouts, is that okay, Council?
Sure.
Sure, yeah. Maybe, what do you think, right up here or down there?
Mayor, I think it'd be good down here.
Okay, great. Okay, next on the agenda is open forum, and we do have one request from Ms. Niehaus and Ms. Wyatt. So if y'all would come forward, please. You can't coax her to come up here with you?
Yeah, she's my partner in crime, so, you know, let's get her on up here. Good evening to the Mayor and to the Council, my name is Lenola Wyatt, and I am an adjunct faculty member at Stephen L. Fawston State University in the School of Social Work. And I want to thank you all for allowing us just an opportunity to talk to you today about a project that my students were engaged in in February of this year. And so my students worked from February until about April on a youth engagement project. Now, every one of us, we know how important it is that we engage our youth, because our youth are our future. So Twenty One Seven had come to me and say, hey, your students are doing research, can they do more research on youth engagement, civic engagement, connectedness with youth to our community? And that's what my students did. Seven of my students worked on this particular project for several months, did research. They looked at best practice models in other cities. And so what we're wanting to do is to give you the findings from this particular research project. We did have it scheduled back in May, and then there was this tornado sort of weather supposed to have come through, so we had to cancel it. So this will be on June fourteenth, Tuesday, at the C.L. Simon Rec Center at five o'clock. So I think it's very, very important that our city, as well as our county, really get involved. And I'm inviting each one of you to participate. Each one, bring, I'm not going to say bring one, bring two or three or four, okay? And the community also is invited to this particular meeting. And what we're hoping to do, we're going to show you some statistics. We're going to look at the area between Twenty One, Highway Twenty One, and Highway Seven, and the youth and disconnectedness, what's going on over there, crime rates. We're going to be looking at poverty statistics, but you guys probably already know about that. But there are some other things that we would like to suggest that the city, as well as the county, can consider in the future to connect our youth, okay? So Ms. Nancy, is there anything that you would like to add? Are there any questions that, I don't know if you can speak or whatever, but is there any questions?
Yeah, there's one thing, Lenola is going to lead everybody who comes in work groups, so that we can actually form a plan for the youth. So it's not just a matter of listening, it's also a matter of working.
Yes, if I can get all you distinguished folks in one room, I can't leave, let you go, without actually coming up with some plans, it's something that we can do in the future to impact this important matter.
Great, we appreciate your initiative, and I think that would, at your forum, give us an opportunity to engage more, rather than at the Council meeting today. But we do thank you for the invitation and letting us know, you know, what we'll see there.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you all for being with us tonight. Okay, next we'll move to the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item C, just so I can get caught up to speed.
Sure, sure, okay.
I'd like to remove B, item B.
Item B, okay, all right. Okay, everything else okay? Can I get a motion on the others, please?
Move to accept the consent agenda minus items B and C.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all right, any discussion? Those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we will move to item six B, consider rejecting bids for Stern Huya House Museum and Library Roof Replacement. Community Service Assistant Director.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Service Assistant Director. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'll give you a quick overview on this item. We'd originally estimated about forty-four thousand dollars to do a cedar shingle roof on the Stern Huya Museum. The one we have is about ten years old, which doesn't seem that old until you look at cedar shingle roofs, and that's kind of their lifespan. We also had a tree lose some limbs, it kind of damaged the roof years ago. So we estimated forty-four thousand dollars in March of twenty twenty-one. We went out for bids, got two bids, and our low bid was ninety-four thousand dollars. So it was a little bit more than we had anticipated. Roof prices have fluctuated greatly over the last year or so since we got our original estimate. So what we are requesting to do is reject both bids, work with a roofing contractor, and see if we can pare down our scope, see if there's different material we could possibly use that's still historically accurate, still appropriate for the building, but not necessarily that ninety-four thousand dollar price tag. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Now, both low bids came from the same company, right?
No, we had Marsh Waterproofing was one of them, and then S. Goodwin Roof Service. So Marsh Waterproofing was the low bid.
And my question was going to be, what do we do now? I mean, because we are removing the bid, both bids.
Yes, we are, so we met with Tim Marsh at Marsh Waterproofing. He's done so much work on all of our historic structures, and we've asked him to come up with a couple of different options for us. At the Stern Huya Museum, the back half of the roof is in worse condition than the front. So we're looking at, can we just do the back right now? Is there a different material, because synthetic roofing materials have come a long way? That we will have to go through Texas Historic Commission to make sure it's appropriate and would be approved. Those are still in the high price range, but they tend to have a lot longer lifespan. One product, not necessarily one we're endorsing or saying we're going to use, but one product had a fifty-year warranty on it and lifespan, so I would never have to do this ever again, which would be nice. So we've asked him to come up with some options and kind of give us some guidance on that.
What is your budget for this roof?
Our budget was forty-four thousand dollars. But we've gone for our next budget year, we've requested and put it in there for the higher price range, because we think roofing materials will stay about this range with inflation and like everything else. And if we went with a synthetic roofing material, we would have to go with a higher price as well.
The longevity of roof would not be there, right?
If we went with a synthetic, it would be longevity, but then we have to look at preservation standards, is it appropriate, is it not appropriate? And then we would look at, if we do go back with the wood roof, is there something we can do to kind of make that lifespan a little bit longer?
So we'll see your request in the near future.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, do I have a motion for B, six B?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
To reject those bids.
Second.
Have a second, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to six C, consider approval of a change order to the construction contract of the ongoing twenty twenty-one SWTP Filter Seven Rehab Project in the amount of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Director of Public Works.
Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works, city engineer, and I'll certainly answer your questions. Let me give you just a five-second overview. So back in April, we awarded a contract to a mechanical contractor for a major filter rehab at our service water plant, and that's part of our significant treatments sections that we do. That also included the replacement of a number of old valves. These valves are twenty and twenty-five years old and are failing. They're very expensive valves, they're very large valves, and so we combined those into a project until we thought we kind of had used our budget dollars up at the time. We're very pleased with a contract that came in lower, and so we've awarded that, or you awarded that, in April. Since that time, we've had additional valves fail that we knew were not, were not in good shape to begin with. So we had always planned to come back to you with a secondary project. Because of the pricing and because of availability of materials, and because just everything is going up, we saw the budget opportunity to be able to add these additional failing valves into this as a change order. So we're not going to have mobilization and cost. So we're very certain that this is an economical way to do what would have actually been kind of a second project for us. Anyway, I'll answer questions.
That was the main thing, I just wanted to make sure that this was the project that I thought it was, and to make sure that these are the valves that need to be replaced now. There aren't additional ones that we're going to have to come back six months from now, and we could be in that position, but these are the ones you know of now, right?
Well, we cross our fingers, and this is the bulk of our valves, lots of valves at a plant. And so, yes, we're hoping this gets us all done. And like I say, we're fortunate enough to have the budget dollars available, because our bids came in so good, Mr. Oakby. So, yeah, I think this will probably get us there. We will be back to you, a little telegraphing, we've had a second filter fail, so we have budgeted for another filter replacement project, so we'll be visiting with you in the near future about bidding that one. But hopefully, we won't have valves involved at the time. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion, we approve item six C.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? Those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to number seven, regular agenda. City will see staff recommendations and public input on the following items, and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. First one, I'll open a public hearing to consider approval of a zone change from R-one single-family to R-four multifamily for approximately three tenths of an acre, being Lot One, Block Three of the Benita subdivision located at nineteen oh five Pearl Street. This request has been submitted by Mario Wesley, case file Z O N twenty twenty-two dash oh five, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor, Lena Hilton, City Planner. As stated, this property is about a third of an acre, located on the northwest corner of Pearl Street and Ellington Street. This property has an existing single-family home built on it back in nineteen sixty-five. It's approximately twelve hundred square feet. The lot is zoned R-one, but is a little bit larger than your typical R-one zoning lot and some of the other lots within the subdivision, being about thirteen thousand square feet, and is located at the terminus of Ellington Street, where you have the Riverside Apartment complex to the west. And so, again, the request is for a zone change from R-one single-family to R-four multifamily. This area really includes a mix of different residential zoning and development patterns, including R-four, a single-family, and then some duplex and lower-density residential mixes in the area. And so when you look at the map, you'll see R-one single-family primarily along that Pearl Street corridor to the north, east, and south. This is the same zoning pattern that's been in place since the nineteen seventies. Some of the more recent density, or some of the more recent residential developments have been those multifamily projects. The Riverside Apartments to the west were built back in nineteen seventies. The Benita Apartments to the north were built in the eighties. And then most recently, you have the Ellington Court Apartments that were built in twenty thirteen, which is zoned B-two that you see in purple. And we have seen some additional infill in the area to the north, closer to West College Street, where we've seen some properties redevelop with duplexes and triplexes, as we see the higher demand in housing in this area, especially in close proximity to the university, and within walking distance of other retail and commercial uses. And so, again, this subdivision was initially established in nineteen sixty-five, but since then, we've seen growth in the area primarily aligned with the growth of SFA. So a lot of that was in the nineteen eighties, when we saw the student population double. So there has been some transition over time. The future land use plan for this area is single-family, and you see that it does follow the zoning primarily in this area. To the west, you have the rural development designation that's primarily due to the Benita Creek and that floodplain in that area. And then to the east, you have commercial, which reflects the commercial development along North Street. Staff does find that the request does meet a number of the land use policies that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, including infill and providing for affordable housing within walking distance to amenities and services, like the university and retail and some of the other commercial uses in the area. And these are some photos of the property. This is actually standing at the intersection of Pearl Street and Ellington, looking at the property head-on. The applicant has stated that they intend to maintain the current single-family home and build a duplex into the rear of the property. And just to give you a little bit of background, when staff was first approached about this project, the applicant was requesting a duplex zoning designation. And so whenever we're looking at the zoning districts, whenever someone wants to change the zoning on a property, we don't allow partial zoning. You can zone the entire lot, but you can't zone a piece of a lot or a corner of a lot. And so the direction that we gave the applicant at that time, which was in March, was to subdivide the property first, and then just rezone the portion of the property that they wanted to develop, instead of rezoning the whole thing. And so the applicant actually brought forward a proposed subdivision, and we took that to our zoning board of adjustment in March, because the lot is oversized for a single-family, but it's a little too small for duplex zoning. So the lot is actually, has enough square footage to meet the R-three zoning district, has enough width, but the lot was a little bit short. And so we took that to the zoning board of adjustment, and then the idea was to subdivide it and then bring it to council for a request for a duplex zoning. That request was denied, and so essentially, that's when the applicant pivoted and changed the request to R-four zoning, which is where we're at today. Just want to give you a little bit of background information, the initial request was for R-three duplex. That required a variance due to the subdivision requirements, that failed. And so the alternative was the request for R-four. We did require the applicant to have a neighborhood meeting to discuss the development with the people in the immediate area, discuss their concerns. We had a couple of residents come, those were the property owners who reside right there next to the property. So we had the resident from two twenty-one Ellington. He lives at the southeast corner of Ellington and Pearl. And then we had the property owner immediately north of the subject property attend, and they answered questions. The applicant showed them a rendering to give them an example of what the development might look like. There were some concerns that the R-four zoning would create a catalyst for additional R-four zone change requests and almost provide a domino effect. And we did explain that this property is a little bit more uniquely situated than the other lots in the area, because it's not mid-block, it's at the heart intersection, it's at the terminus of a public street that dead ends into an apartment complex. And so this request would be treated differently than a request for multifamily mid-block that was strung into the north and south for a single-family. We then took that request to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and those residents did attend. We had some additional people in attendance that had just general concerns about the increase in density for the R-four zoning district. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission had a lengthy discussion about the merits of R-four and all those things that are allowed in that district versus what the applicant was proposing. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of that, this zone change, but it was three to two vote, based on the concerns of the additional density that was allowed in that district versus what the applicant was initially proposing. So I just wanted to give you some background on the neighborhood meeting input that we got, and then the input that we actually got at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And I know a number of those residents are in attendance, and you'll hear from them in just a little bit. But just to give you an idea of some of the other character in the area, these are some of the other single-family homes, they're located on Pearl Street. These are also built in the mid to late nineteen sixties and seventies, traditional single-family homes. They're all very similar in character. This is an image of the Riverside Apartment complex, as you're looking west, standing at Pearl Street. That's the upper left-hand corner, and then the lower right-hand corner, that's looking east to Ellington Street. And you can see that Ellington Court Apartments in the background. We did send, sorry, twelve notices to property owners within the two-hundred-foot buffer, and we received three written letters of opposition, and those were in your packet. And those were from the resident from two twenty-one Ellington Street, from nineteen seventeen Pearl Street, and the property manager for the Benita Creek Apartments, that's to the upper left, you see that in the green, in the green star. So those were the written opposition letters that we received. Based on that written opposition, we looked at, does that qualify for the twenty percent rule that would require City Council to approve the request by supermajority vote? And we found that the area located within that two-hundred-foot buffer does equal nineteen point five percent, but not the twenty percent. It's about a thousand square feet short of that. So the City Council could approve the request with a simple majority vote and not require the, for votes for approval. So just wanted to provide that background, I know that was a question that came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as well. And so based on the conditions for approval and the facts outlined in the staff report, staff is recommending approval. We do recognize that the additional density in the area could potentially create some compatibility issues with the properties immediately adjacent, but overall wouldn't have a significant impact for the overall neighborhood. We do want to note that City Council does have the option to approve the request, deny the request, or approve the request with conditions. So it is the Council's prerogative to approve the request with conditions on the property to help mitigate some of those concerns outlined by the neighbors, including compatibility and nuisances. And so one of the some of the things that we talked about at the Planning and Zoning Commission were providing conditions on limitations on building height. And so I know the applicant has stated that the proposed duplex would be two stories. And so one of the conditions could be limiting any development on the property to two stories. The City Council could impose conditions that spoke to creating additional buffers and protections for those adjacent property owners. So there are some things that could be incorporated into an approval that help mitigate some of those concerns from neighbors on the increase in density and some of the nuisances that were brought up as concerns for the zone change. And so with that, I conclude staff's presentation. I know I gave you a lot of information, and so I'll open it up for questions from the Council, unless you guys want to go ahead and take questions from the audience or hear from the applicant that are also in attendance.
If the applicant will want to speak, I think that's where we would start, is that okay, Council, to go that way? And then public comment after that?
Absolutely.
How y'all doing? I'm Mario Wesley, real estate agent with In-Westland Associates Real Estate here in Nakadochas. And so basically, what the property owner is wanting to do is just add in the bag a multifamily duplex. So just basically, it'd be just one unit on the bottom, one unit on the top. And so on this particular lot, like she said, it's a corner lot that's kind of oversized, that can, you know, that has enough space that can sufficiently hold this piece of property in the back. And it's also has frontage on Ellington Street. So for the duplex, you can have access right there on Ellington Street. And then when coming back on Pearl Street, it will be traffic control, it has a stop sign right there. So, and basically, like I said, you're only providing two units. So I think that the impact on the neighborhood would be very minimal. It's also touching multifamily in the back, currently zoned multifamily. And I think that this duplex would add additional housing, additional rental space to Nakadochas inventory, which my office, we do property management. And right now, there is an extreme shortage of available units that's affordable in Nakadochas. And I think that this would help students, young teachers, young nurses with housing, and also help to keep the housing pricing down as far as on rent. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I do, is the applicant not here, or you're representing the applicant today?
Yes, I'm representing the applicant, she's not, she couldn't make it today. She made it to the community meeting and also the zoning meeting, but with her work, she was not able to make it. And also, her immediate neighbor that's to the north of her, who is also in agreeance to this project, he was not able to make it either. But they made the two other meetings, but just couldn't make it today, unfortunately.
There's going to be a driveway on Ellington?
Yes, sir, that'll be the access for the unit on Ellington Street.
And then is that where the multistructure is going to be faced? Is that going to be the front of it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll hear public comment, anyone want to speak? Yes, Ms. Costella.
Zoning, oh, excuse me, Patricia Costella, ten or nine, whatever, Logan's Port Street. Zoning runs with the land. It's all well and good to say this duplex will be wonderful, but they could sell it five minutes after it's rezoned to R-four to anyone, and R-four would allow a multifamily, anything. Okay, so here's my problem. My problem is a big problem, and I'd hope you would look at your packet, because here's where we keep going in zoning. Let me get my notes here. This is not compatible with the neighborhood, because the neighborhood, if you look at the map, was R-one. the map, was R1. It's not compatible with the comprehensive plan, the old or the new, because they're both R1. If you, it does not align with ordinance 118, 139, and because, you know, I'm a zoning Nazi here or whatever you want to call me, I would like to make some comments about how we are interpreting our zoning ordinances. Okay, it seems the goal of the city's planning staff is to destroy all of our older neighborhoods because they're not protected. They're not protected by homeowners. They're not protected. If you would look at your packet, you will see that the letter sent forward, the request, first of all, was being made by developer. I don't understand that at all, but neither, you know, here nor there. Here we go, low property, high property density, northeast corner, all of that. But let's go to ordinance 118, 139, compatibility. It's not compatible. It is not compatible. If you look at your map, you can see clearly that one all down the street and across the street are R1 houses, most of them, a lot of them, older residents. One lady that I talked with is housebound, and the applicant states the owner intends to maintain the existing, none of that means anything. Zoning runs with the land. They can sell it two days later. R4 can be many things. We can't control it. And if you'll look, one, two, three, four, it states here, two duplexes or multifamily, possibly with nine dwelling units, right here. That's what it's telling us, but it would not significantly do anything. Orderly growth and development? No. It won't affect it? Yes, it will. Let's go down to nuisances. Some of the people I talked to are already concerned about noise and things in the neighborhood. It seems they're not getting anywhere with it. Okay, let's go to landscaping. Landscaping, I don't even think we have a landscaping ordinance for R1. I don't know. I don't know. The comprehensive plan, this violates the old and the new. So what's the point of a comprehensive plan if we're already destroying the comprehensive plan before we even put it in action? Okay? Land use goals and objective. Encourage infill developments. I am so tired of this. Development, if you read the federal guidelines that have been put forward, you will see a paragraph, and this paragraph is very clear. It states when we try to get housing, when we try to fix old houses to give to people that do not have a great deal of money, we prefer people to own. We do not prefer it sent to developers. And this is what's going on. Okay, it's not compatible. It doesn't meet the goals and objectives of the 2003. As far as the notices that were sent out or weren't sent out, people don't understand zoning. They just don't understand it. But I don't understand and will never understand why we keep raping our old neighborhoods because that's what we're doing. Look at North Street. If people want to live there in their R1 houses, just rezone the whole street multifamily. Let them all get a developer to build houses behind them. Don't give one person the right to destroy a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Mr. Sullivan?
Hello, Benjamin Sullivan. So I'm actually the applicant's interior designer. So I've designed their house, her house for her. She's a doctor here in Nacogdoches. She's the NICU doctor at Memorial and actually just got, she just transferred over to the medical center. She is here 15 days a month, and then she's at her other practice in Texarkana 15 days a month. She has no plans to sell the property. The main reason, I'm actually the one who put this idea in her head. When she purchased the house, she didn't realize how much car light was coming in to her property from the apartments behind. And so I suggested she put a guest house back there possibly if we could. And this was a couple of years ago when we started this kind of dialogue of doing this. She's a single woman, lives by herself, and she just kind of felt that it would be nice to have that buffer and a bit of safety net between her and the apartment complex. She has me do all of her selections and finishes, so I know what's going to be built, and it's going to be very nice, and it's going to be something that she will use for rental. But mainly, what she's planning on doing is for traveling nurses or doctors that are in need because she works in the medical field. She also has family in Thailand that comes for months on end, and so she wants to have a place for them to be when they're here. Her daughter's in medical school, and she wants to have a place when her daughter comes in and her daughter has kids, that they are there because the house is more her private house because she works crazy hours, that she needs to have a quiet home when she gets home. And that's kind of the point of building this. So Ellington's kind of hard parking for her as well, too. When I go over, I can't park on the street because there's tow signs and people will tow the car or hit your cars. And so it adds additional parking for her as well, too, when she has guests as well. But she has no plan whatsoever to sell the house. She unfortunately could not be here because she's back in Texarkana working. And she's, you know, a really, really lovely lady. I've known her for years. So I'm personally vouching for her. I don't like zoning change, so but I think that what I know from her and what she will do, it's not something that she's going to go and sell it tomorrow. She has no plans of doing that. She holds on to her real estate for a very long time and doesn't sell anything really ever. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Milton Mura. I spoke briefly at the Planning and Zoning meeting also, and I'm opposed to this zoning change. I lived at 1815 Pearl, which is five houses south of this location for about 23 years. And for that 23 years plus about another 23 years, I've tried to maintain our little neighborhood. I'm kind of worn out, to be honest with you, because it's gone on so long. I've worked with four different city planners down through the year, and I've never gotten anywhere, any help in maintaining the integrity of the R1 zoning in that area. Finally, I got to the point where I was just wanting to maintain the appearance of the neighborhood since there's so many rentals in the area that I just couldn't, the appearance is not maintained by people that are renting, you know? So it was a big problem. And so anyhow, I've just finally just worked so long on it, and I'm not thinking that we need to change a zone over there. What they're asking to do is there's a two-block section of single-family residential area there, and they're wanting to change one lot right in the middle, right there. Seems like it's a rather unusual request, but this is what comes from the lack of non-enforcement of zoning ordinances from R1 for all these years. And so the lack of enforcement of rules then starts dictating what these decisions that are made in later years, like right now. It starts making the decision for you in a way, you know, where if that was, had been made a nice, single-family residential area, you wouldn't be having a request like this probably tonight. So I'm not against any kind of improvement to our community. We've got our comprehensive plan coming on, and I was thinking about that. They may even have an idea about what to do about that area that we don't know about right now, you know? But so at this point in time, I'm opposed to this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Woods?
My name is Gary Woods. I reside at 221 Ellington Street. Mr. Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My understanding is, of course, when I was at the P&amp;Z meeting, I had a written presentation that y'all have that at your disposal. The good news is I didn't break my copy, so I'm not going to read it. I do, however, have two letters to present to you, two homeowners within the 200-foot range. One happens to be my son, who is buying 1839 Pearl from me. He has to work. He couldn't be here, and I want him working so he can pay the note. The other letter is from John L. Sharp. John L. owns two houses. His residence is outside, but he owns the property that is inside. So who do I give these two letters?
Which one is he, Gary?
John Sharp.
What address do you know?
2000, that's his residence. He owns the property that is due south of that, which is inside the 200-foot residence. My son's house is 1839 Pearl Street, and mine is straight across the street, cattywampus. I hope y'all understand what cattywampus means, but I'm catty-cornered from the subject property. I would like to say that I have no problem at all with the lady. She is a wonderful person, and I agree completely with what he said. I can't go any further because I haven't been in the house. I don't know what kind of job you did. But if you have my information, that's all I want to present.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Philip Blackburn. I live on Logan's Port Street. I just want to comment, this is very similar to what happened on Logan's Port Street, where you have something that is clearly illegal. This is not in accordance with the comprehensive plan. I've got the, that's from the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. It's yellow, a single-family residential. Okay? There was no letter written to ask the city council to change the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, so that was also illegal. And so if this is approved, it will be another illegal zone change. And this is another attack on our single-family residential neighborhoods, which is ongoing. And I know there's good intentions, okay? But there's the old expression that the highway to hell is paved with good intentions. And there's someone here, I won't mention any names, who purchased a property over on Harris Street and Burke Street and got it upzoned to R4 because he wanted to build houses, single-family residential houses in there, but at a higher density. And, you know, that was allowed by the city council at the time. But then plans changed, and he sold the property. And now the new owner wants to build a bunch of duplexes, as many as will fit. He even tried to give the new owner the plans that he had paid good money for that had it all laid out on how that, well, he didn't want those. And so if you make an exception, there's no guarantee. I mean, I'm sure the lady plans to do what she says she's going to do, but that could change tomorrow. So I'm against this. I don't live within the 200 feet, but I think you should, you know, oppose it. And I have a question, a technical question. This other property that we just got a letter of opposition, is that, what address is that?
Oh.
Is that the 1922?
Yes, 2000 and 1922.
Okay, well, this is going to bring it up, does this bring it to the supermajority vote then? Because that's going to be an extra one that will affect the 20% rule. Okay? Is that correct? We have a letter of opposition right here, right?
Okay, we'll get advisement on that. Thank you. Do you have a, what do you think on that?
Did you calculate that?
Yes.
I need that.
Yes, so.
19.5%.
Yes, so, I'm sorry.
Marshall is in, Gary's son, and had not given us a letter before, I don't think, right? Yeah. So that, he's right, yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. And the other one was for Mr. John Sharp, correct?
1839, yeah.
Okay.
Sharp is 1922.
Right. And 1839 is Mr. Wood's son.
Okay, so based on, so I have a copy of the list of the property owners that were notified for within the 200-foot buffer, and those do include Mr. John Sharp, who owns 2000 Pearl Street, but I believe it's 1922. And so the corner of that, I mean, really, what we're looking for is 1,000 square feet of the corner of that and property, and then the other property owners, Mr. John Woods, he owns the property 1839. And so, I mean, roughly, I think it's close enough to where you could probably approximate that it would be at the, so I mean, I feel okay saying that yes, it requires the supermajority vote without exact calculations.
Right.
Because it's such a very little amount.
Thank you. Okay.
I don't have those areas calculated on hand.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. I haven't done that calculation.
Let me, let us complete public comment.
Sure.
Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Okay. I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to council. Council, any comments or questions? Mr. Hugby, do you want to start?
Was that everyone in public? Anyone else have, okay. I guess my first question is, if it does require a supermajority, that requires three-fourths? Is that correct, Ms. Hilton?
Supermajority includes four affirmative votes. So all four of you would have to vote in favor of the request in order to get it approved.
So it's not three-quarters of the council?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Baldwin?
I don't have issue with rezoning, but I do have an issue with this one because of the frontage of Pearl Street. I don't, I don't agree to, agree to the rezoning, and if it's can't be split, then I'm not, I don't agree to the rezoning.
We did provide, I did just go ahead and take a snippet of the survey, just in case that came up, just to give you an idea. So the lot is just a little over 13,000 square feet. It has 90 feet of frontage on Pearl Street and 100 feet of frontage on Ellington Street. And so this is the kind of the proposed lot layout that we were, the applicant was requesting when it went to the zoning board of adjustment, and so proposing that the access take from Ellington Street. Yes, sir.
All right, now, the two that, in planning and zone that opposed it, what was their reason for opposing?
Their primary concern was the same of those raised by the residents of the area, essentially maintaining the area as single-family and this having the potential to kind of be a catalyst for additional multifamily projects. And we had discussion about that, the nature of zoning request and the nature of the property itself. And so that was, I think, the primary reason why you saw the split vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I have a couple of comments. I think the lady who is, I'm sure she's a lovely woman, and I don't think we need to rezone just because she's a lovely woman. And if she needs more room when her family comes, I'll offer my house. And, but I have some questions for Mr. Canizares, so. There are several questions I just want to ask you about this.
Oh, you'll be under the public?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just, I can't see very far away. I don't have my glasses on, and I forgot to bring them, so. So I know, as a city council, what's our job? We can't hire and fire staff, and we can't even tell you how to go about hiring and firing staff. But what we do need to know is what are our policies and our principles involved here? So I have some real serious questions about our policies related to zoning because they seem to be a little inconsistent lately. And the first one is that how are we using the comprehensive plan that we have now? It is clearly against the land use, the proposed land use in the past. This is all R1, and as Mr. Blackburn is fond of saying, yellow is yellow, yellow is yellow. But it's true. It's all R1. So what is our policy here as far as following the comprehensive plan?
Well, you know, I can't speak to priority coming, but the image that you're showing here, this is a copy, I believe this is a copy of the comprehensive plan that was approved back in 2003. So as you can see, that is a lot of yellow, and there is a lot of yellow. And as you go to the north of that, it was yellow back when it was approved. It was yellow at the corner of Pearl and Ellington, and it's changed. It's changed over time.
Our comprehensive plan has changed?
No, ma'am, the zoning has changed.
So we are not following? I need to understand.
I guess where I'm coming from is over time, zoning has changed in that community. Just past applicants and developers, past councils have approved zoning requests in that neighborhood to change it from R1 to R4.
So what is our current policy? Are we following the comprehensive plan, or are we just not going to follow the 2003? I'm trying to understand.
No, sure, I think we are following the comprehensive plan based on the review of staff and their professional opinion of how things have developed. And, you know, developers do have a right to request zoning changes. As Ms. Um, uh, as Ms. Hilton mentioned, it did go through a process from R three to do the, the border zoning adjustment. It was denied, uh, because of some of the concerns that were raised as far as the lot width. And so it went through the R four, it went through the zoning process. Uh, it did go, it did receive a favorable recommendation from staff based on its review. But as you can see on this slide, the neighborhood has changed, uh, as far as zoning. Now, I can't speak to these other zoning categories that, or these other zoning, um, uh, changes that have happened, because it's happened before my time. I don't have the history. If it happened five years ago, ten years, I just don't know. I don't know the history. So with zoning, it does, it, it does change, incrementally change, as though, once you start the ball, as Ms. Hilton mentioned, there is potential, that domino effect. And so that's part of the concerns that, that, that was brought forward by the community that was mentioned here just today, that once you get the ball rolling, it can continue. So really, it's up to this council. If you don't wanna see additional development through this neighborhood, then the simplest thing is just to deny it, and-
But, but what I'm concerned about is that our staff is recommending, the staff recommendation.
Okay.
And you lead our staff, and you lead us in these policies and these principles. So I'm extraordinarily concerned-
Okay.
About the role that we are having in this domino effect, as Mr. Moore explained. Um, and I have a second issue, which is that I have heard you say a number of times that the city would never recommend rezoning from R one to R four, that that's too big a jump. And, um, and, and yet, and I believed you. And actually, I actually, I, I, I spoke to other people who were concerned about rezoning their neighborhoods, and I said, "No, no, Mr. Canizares has said, 'We will not jump from R one to R four.' They have to go through certain steps." And seems like our, we don't have a policy, or we are now okaying and approving and recommending going from R one to R four?
I, I think the specific comment that you're mentioning about not recommending from R one to R four was when we were going through the low-income count, low-income housing tax credit discussion. That was definitely-
And, uh, uh-huh, go ahead.
Well, those are the specific projects, because it was purely multifamily, purely multifamily for those projects, based on R one adjacent developments, R one adjacent zoning. We would not recommend that. We were very explicit with the developers that brought that forward, that we would not be, we would not be recommending that, even if council went through the process of endorsing those requests.
So how is this, going from R one to R four, different?
Well-
The adjacent properties are R one?
They are, and I think the differences here is what's being recommended for the development is duplex housing, not multi-story, multifamily type development. Now, I understand this is, I guess, a two-story duplex, so, but not-
R four is R four.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And so we've also talked about that our zoning categories are too broad in nature. They build upon each other, and so because this did not fit R three, one of the option, the option that staff recommended was R four. Could it have been a planned development to make it more, uh, specific to what was in keeping with what would be acceptable to the neighborhood, potentially? And that's something that we as staff have been discussing, and seeing if we need to do more planned development recommendations as opposed to, if R three doesn't work, we should might, maybe not be recommending R four because of the issues that R four brings. It's too broad of a category. You have the option, as been mentioned before, while they, yes, they do have the need, the want to build, um, duplex, there is the option of eventually building a multi-story, multifamily development. And if that's not acceptable, then we shouldn't do that.
So I'll ask my question-
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, um, what are the principles that we're following right now? It, are we following the comprehensive, uh, land use map that shows that this is single-family? Uh, or are we completely ditching it because we want to infill, which, which I keep hearing, infill with high-density housing, and infilling is our, that seems to be the overriding. I, I would like you all to please clarify that. R one to R four, R one to R three, wha- what are we dealing with right now? If you could please bring that back to council, so we don't keep going back and forth on this and looking at individual.
And again, I think the issue here is, the original application was to do duplex housing. I think they, what they really wanted was R three. It was denied, and so they went to R four. And so, uh, could we have used a planned development for this lot, potentially? Uh, but it still would have been a duplex.
Well, again, I'm still concerned with staff recommendations and our city's recommendations. We have, um, a neighborhood where people have lived all their lives, um, for, for multiple years, for over fifty years, and, um, we destroying our old neighborhoods that are in good condition, that they're being cared for, it just doesn't seem like a good plan.
Well, and, and if it's-
And if you could come back and explain those two principles, following the comprehensive plan or not following the, the comprehensive plan, and whether we're gonna jump from R one to R four at one on earth are our standards, we, we have to have some standards.
Absolutely, and we can certainly come back to you. At the end of the day, uh, it needs to be, if it's the council's policy to not issue R four zoning in certain neighborhoods, then we need to understand that.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anything else?
Just a couple of notes that I wanna make. I agree with Dr. Bellinger's points that we've got to, we have to, we have to discuss what our policies are and how we're dealing with neighborhoods. I agree with you, Mr. Canizares, that we need to look at our zoning code, and we need to make changes. Our categories are too broad. We've discussed that at length. But more than that, we need to stop taking R one in neighborhoods where people have lived for decades. We just need to stop upzoning that. Last month, we authorized a specific use permit for someone to put a guest house on Mount Street. If that was the intention, we could have gone that route. But I'm not inclined to approve a zone change from R one to R four.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I don't see a reason, I mean, I don't see an ability to do this either. I, I drove the area, uh, today, and, and, uh, you know, this, this spot on, on Pearl is still a, you know, it's still a viable neighborhood, and the apartments back there, uh, you know, certainly encroach on it, and, you know, with an R four, just, I think, we just get more of that, so, anyway. Uh, with that said-
I will make a motion to deny the request.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mayor, the straight-up denial without more is read as a denial with prejudice. If council would entertain, or wants to entertain, some lesser restriction on the property, gives the co- property owner a chance to come back with a modified plan that does something different, say a planned development. If you're interested in that, you need to specify that your denial is without prejudice, so they can do that within a year. If you're not interested in that, specify that you want it with prejudice, and let these people know that.
The, the motion, there's been a, a motion made and seconded, and that assumes with prejudice correctly, or?
If you don't state, the ordinance reads it as being with prejudice.
I, I'll call the question.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We will move on to seven B. Consider approval to name the new disc golf course at Lake Nakadoches West Park Iron Leaf Disc Golf Course. Mr. Anderson?
John Anderson, I represent your Facilities Naming Committee. This will be completely uncontroversial, I think. It was created, for those of you who haven't encountered this little committee that meets sporadically upon request, um, it was created to establish criteria for naming things that are public buildings, or streets, or parks, anything, really. And the main idea was to get some criteria established. Generally, the criteria is directed at naming things for people. This one is not one of those. But it does come with a pretty reliable, um, support group. The, if I'm correct, Nakadoches Crushers, which is, I've learned a little bit about, um, frisbee golf in studying this. That is the local group that's, that has its own group, and they sponsor competitions that bring people into town, which is one of the things that we generally are trying to do. This is the west side of Lake Nakadoches. There's already one course out there, and it's run, it looks sort of like a golf course, and generally through wooded areas, simply because they're more attractive. But they also have overhanging limbs, so, in places. This strange name is actually a reflection of normal vocabulary that comes along with those who do frisbee golf, very much like talking to someone who sails boats or plays golf. And the term is an excuse for having missed the cage. And it's usually used facetiously, saying that it must have been an iron leaf. So that's all the background I can offer on it. But it is, uh, something which seems to be developing some momentum. It's popular, it brings in groups for weekends and such. These, and this has the potential for being a particularly popular course. So based upon the request by the group that does this, and the tacit approval expressed, uh, not officially, but expressed by the Parks and Recreation folks, this is our recommendation that we honor their request and put this name on there. Are there any questions, Matt?
I was just going to say one thing. When you said iron leaf, I was thinking that was really a leaf, and it was rust-colored. I did not know that about, and I play golf all the time in there.
A rusted iron leaf.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, since we're gonna abote to prove this, is there any public comment about the naming?
I do have one comment, and that's that if I was to play frisbee golf, I would have to find a lot of iron leaves.
Disc golf. I don't think they terminate it frisbee.
It's heavy.
It's a disc.
Well, I do have to say, I've always wondered how we name things, and this has been enlightening, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Make a motion, we approve the name change for the West Park, um, Disc Golf Course to the Iron Leaf Disc Golf Course.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, move to seven C. Consider approval of contract between City of Nakadoches and Schaumburg &amp; Polk, Inc. For the final completion of engineering plans and specifications for various sanitary sewer projects in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, Director Public Works.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Steve Bartlett, Director Public Works, City Engineer. Have tonight for your consideration an engineering contract between Schaumburg &amp; Polk in the City of Nakadoches in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. It's a little bit of an unusual contract. Normally, we're coming to you when we're starting design. This, however, was started about seventeen years ago, when we funded several dozen sewer projects as part of a two thousand and four Texas Water Development Board State Revolving Fund, which was just basically bonds for us that I think will be paid off in September possibly. So I think we're ending that. Um, so we had more projects designed than we ended up with funds to do at the time. And so these have kind of sat on the shelf. They were all priority. And you may ask how they survived seventeen years if they were priority. We put a lot of Band-Aids on them in the meantime, so. We resurrected these projects. They were generally about eighty-five percent designed, and that's a kind of a judgment call, but they had cover sheets, and all the plans were there. They just needed to be kind of finalized. Uh, so we pulled up the priority projects, and we'd like to reengage Schaumburg &amp; Polk to finish the design on those projects. Two of those have had things built in the way, and will be a little less than eighty-five percent. We gotta do a little surveying and reroute. Uh, but basically, we were looking for near shovel-ready projects. And we've talked about this with you, uh, speci- specifically for the use of our ARPA, our, our Rescue Act funds. So we have four-point-one, round numbers, million in the bank, another four-point-one coming, hopefully in the end of August, beginning of September. And so this will time out, where we can go out to bids for somewhere around five and a half million, our first tranche of sewer projects, uh, in early fall, and this will get us on the road and designed. If we were starting with new scratch projects, we wouldn't be talking about this for nine or twelve more months. So we think this is a good deal. So a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar fee that they're asking for is approximately two percent of what the overall construction cost would be. Let me put that in perspective. So generally, you're gonna see engineering, along with the associated surveying costs for these projects, be somewhere in twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent of construction cost range. And it depends on complexity and how much, uh, surveying they have to do. But generally, uh, if you looked at a fourteen percent fee for the five and a half million, that comes up to seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar engineering fee, a lot of fee. Well, at eighty-five percent, it comes up to just about this number. So that's kind of how we cross-checked their proposed fee for this. So it sounds like a lot of money for things that are already eighty-five percent designed, but you gotta recognize the significant volume of the design that's remaining. So, anyway, we've come to you tonight to let us reengage them and try to get these things finished. The first batch of these should be ready, uh, final reviewable in ninety days, and then we'll probably have another month while we're getting them out on the street. So we're hoping September that we'll be bidding the first batch of these. So be happy to answer any questions you have after a public comment.
Okay, thanks. Any public comment? Okay, so you know, uh-
I'm just so shocked nobody wants to comment on our sewers, so.
It, they go downhill, that's the important part. They flow downhill.
You know where all the Band-Aids are.
Uh, we're gonna dig up a lot of Band-Aids when we do this, aren't we? Yes. A lot of these, by the way, uh, Mayor, I forgot to add, are, are actually some upsizing. So when I say the sewer lines are in bad shape, part of that's capacity. They remo- they run more than full. You don't get to see that as you drive by, but they're very strained, and that als- also causes failure. So a lot of this is going from a six to an eight or to a twelve, and that's a lot of what these project costs are.
We have, have those records somewhere? The records for what sizes?
We absolutely do, yeah.
Thank you.
Got great maps.
Okay, anybody else who'd have a motion?
I move to, um, approve the contract between the city and Schaumburg &amp; Polk.
Have a second?
Second, Mr. Bolden.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that takes us to seven D. Consider appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and Vice Mayor Pro Tem. The mayor, um, I would like to propose that we continue, uh, as we have been, based on tenure, and that our Mayor Pro Tem would continue to be Roy Bolden, and our Vice Mayor Pro Tem would be Amelia Fisher.
Would you like a motion to that?
Could I please? Thank you.
I so move.
Second.
Have a second, thank you. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.